We have a new moderator here. He's the former councillor, city councillor. Chris Markowitz has lived in Newton for over 34 years. He works as a management consultant to several Fortune 100 companies, as well as to the state and local governments. He is a CPA. He was a Newton councillor for six years. He sits on boards of the Charles River Watershed Association and the All Newton Music School, where he served as board president from 2014 to 2017.
And I'm now going to introduce our two candidates today. And this is in alphabetical order as we will kind of use that weight of going forward. So Julie Irish is a longtime Newton Upper Falls resident and the current president of the Upper Falls Area Council, where she has served since 2015. Professionally, she's a social science qualitative research specialist with an extensive background in psychology, research, and academic medicine. And includes leadership roles at Tufts Medical School and Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center. Gary Miller has lived in Newton for almost 27 years and resides in Newton Upper Falls with his husband, Tim. Gary has recently been active as a member of the Neighborhood Liaison Committee for the Northland and is a member of numerous local organizations, including Friends of Cold Spring Park, the Friends of Newton Tennis, and the Newton Conservators. And I thank you all for being here. So you know the rules. You'll be asked questions. You've got 45 seconds. You'll get a little yellow warning when it's 15 seconds. We're not going to run this hard to the line. I just ask you to be respectful of time and try to answer your questions as efficiently as you can. So just for background, I'm sure everyone in this room has probably heard this several times this afternoon. But in the four area councils' recent survey, Newton residents made clear their top concerns are how the city is run and how that affects them. From taxes, transparency in schools to housing, local businesses, seniors, the environment, and quality of life. Many also emphasize wanting a stronger voice in shaping decisions about village centers, infrastructure, and public spaces. Most respondents have lived in Newton for more than 20 years, and they'll be voting in this election. So I guess, let's see. Julie, Gary. So I guess we'll start with Gary.
Okay.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Now, would you tell us about your past service to the people of Ward Five and other aspects of your background that you believe equip you to represent all of your Ward Five constituents should you be elected? And do you believe voters elect you to represent your views or to listen to and represent those diverse views? Their, excuse me, their diverse views, pardon me.
All right, well, thank you. So you mentioned in the intro that I've been a member of the Northland Liaison Committee for the past little over five years, been an advocate for the community as part of that project. One of the voices that raised their hands and said, "Hey, I want to make sure we keep the shuttle", is that the new special permit came forward. Been done a lot of volunteer work in terms of picking up trash and pulling invasives and all the like. And then I think my professional experience is also relevant. I spent over 30 years as a software engineer, currently a product manager. I think those are valuable skills that could bring to the council. We have an issue with our website that I think I can help with. And I think that it also is about bringing the stakeholders together at the table, and that's something that I can help with.
Thank you. That search engine needs serious work. It's been an ongoing. Susan's out there someplace. I think she's been long. A lot of people complaining about that. Julie, would you like me to repeat the question, or do you have it?
Well, yeah, there were a couple of questions there. But first, my background, yeah, as in Ward Five. As you mentioned in the intro, I've been a member of the Upper Falls Area Council for 10 years and currently the president. In that role, I've had a lot of responsibilities of reaching out to the community, working with the city departments, various departments, whether it's Public Works, Parks and Rec, planning. You kind of soup to nuts really as an area council president because you're the interface between the city and the community and the neighborhood. And professionally, I'm a social scientist with qualitative research. And I say that's great because I've studied doctor-patient communication for many years. And as a qualitative researcher, the real question is, you're always, what is the good question? And how do you interpret that, the answers that you get? So I think I can bring that to City Hall.
All right, thank you. So something you both know about and referenced a little bit, at least in the initial comment, Gary. So both of you have been involved as neighborhood advocates with the Northland project on Needham Street bordering Upper Falls. Would you like to tell us your views of this project as it has changed and, you know, it's been delayed in recent years? Aspects you see as positives and negatives for Ward Five? And what you might wish had been done differently? And we'll start with you, Julie.
Okay, 45 seconds. Okay, there's a long history, as we know. First of all, we all wanted something in that area on Needham Street. And we were excited to see something built. Originally, there were some concerns about the size of the development. But through a lot of work, negotiations, advocacy from the community, I think we got a better project. And we're happy to see that move forward. When they came back for the revised special permit, there were some concerns about losing the commercial space. And I think that's really a loss to the community. That building is really, it is not just a regular, you know, the building you might find for office space. It's a very special building. I really feel it would have been attractive for businesses to come in. Having said that, I think that the splash park that we got built is a real amenity to the community and has brought people together. So I think that's been a real amenity, so, yes.
Thank you. Gary, would you like me to repeat that, or?
No, I think I got it.
Northland.
Northland.
How'd it go? Would you have done anything differently?
So I've always been an advocate for the Northland project. I've always thought it was a good project. I feel like we really need the housing. The biggest concern I had with it was probably the traffic it would bring. Needham Street is a traffic nightmare, as you know. But I think today, the project that we have with the loss of the commercial space is going to reduce the, cut the increase in the traffic. So I think we're better off now than we were before. I think it's a great project. I'm really looking forward to the open space, the amenities, like Julie mentioned, the splash park and the rest. So I think it's going to be great.
Okay, thank you. So this is a bit of a tag on to both of your most recent comments. And by the way, when I go to Needham Street, I leave the night before. Now, compared to some of our neighboring communities, Newton has seen its commercial tax base shrink in recent years. Commercial property tax rates are higher than residential tax rates. They're actually like 1.75, the residential rate. And they generate, they're considered to generate less costs in terms of city services. Why has Newton allowed so much of its commercially zoned land to be converted to residential use? And what specific steps would you take as a city councillor to restore Newton's commercial tax base and prevent the loss of commercially zoned land? So Gary, we'll start with you.
So I think I would start here by saying we do need the housing. And so I don't necessarily regret that we've lost some if it's replaced by housing. But I do agree that we need to have better processes for commercial development. We need, I think, to look at some of the industrial manufacturing spaces that have become real empty zones in the city and see if we can rezone those and make commercial by right in some of those areas. And look at, you know, how we can include more mixed use as well, mixed use development in our village centers to help our businesses there, to have more traffic, more business, more foot traffic, more business available for them so that they can be successful.
Julie, would you like me to repeat that?
Sure.
Okay. So compared to some of our neighboring communities, Newton has seen its commercial tax base shrink in recent years. Yet, commercial property tax rates are higher than residential property tax rates, and commercial properties generate lower costs in terms of city services. Why has Newton allowed so much of this commercially zoned land to be converted to residential use? And what specific steps would you take as a city councillor to restore Newton's commercial tax base and prevent the loss of commercially zoned land?
Yeah, I think the loss of commercial land is a real priority just in terms of increasing revenue for the city, which we all know that we're in a real budget crunch. So in terms of steps of increasing that, I think it's evident as a sort of a three-pronged approach. Because, one, what can we do to attract businesses? And we know that we need to streamline the getting the business up and running, getting your sign out there. That's really important. Secondly, once businesses are here, we need to continue the relationship, work with them, so they want to stay here. And, you know, I think that's really important, that we have that relationship if they need help with electrical or plumbing or parking or seating or whatever it is, that we have established relationships with each of the businesses. And then, thirdly, we have to find out why they're leaving, going to other communities. And that's really important, to find out, why are they leaving? And so, once we have to find out, to really investigate and keep them here.
Would you like to add anything, Gary?
I think I would just add, we really need to look at the kind of costs that we add to the commercial businesses that want to move here. Things like minimum parking requirements, extra requirements that are not necessarily needed and allow them to build the amount of parking that they think is the right amount for them.
Anything to add to that, Julie? Good, thank you. All right, we're going to shift gears here a little bit and talk about one of my favorite topics, actually. So Newton has a strong mayor form of government, one that generally limits the power of the legislative branch of our local government. And you are going to be, one of you will become a legislator. Do you support changes to shift that imbalance, such as the city council having its own city-funded attorney? More say over appointees and hiring of departmental heads and senior staff with whom the city council must work on policy? And early and authentic participation in shaping the city's budget? And please address whether such changes might be voluntary and informal rather than charter changes. And I think it's Julie.
Okay. Yes, we have a really strong, the mayor has a lot of power here in the city of Newton. That's the way the charter is structured. But I think it's depending on who the mayor is and how to use that power. You know, holding on tightly to the power. I think real leadership comes when you don't hold on to the power so tightly. And I'd love to see whoever the mayor is bring in the role of the city council, seek their advice, help them in the decision-making. It is a choice by the mayor of what he or she can do. And whether, I think that would be the start. Because rather than going through charter changes, it's really putting the onus on the mayor to be inclusive, bring in the city council, and around the decision-making, early and often.
Thank you. Gary, would you like me to repeat it, or are you okay?
No, I'm good. So I think it's really important that we have an independent and separate city council from the mayor. I do support the city council having more resources and more power. And, for example, having its own attorney on staff and a separate budget line for that. Because I think the city will work the best when we have independent bodies who can be checks on one another.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, we'll start with you, Gary. So how much time do you think is needed to discharge the responsibilities of a city councillor on a weekly or on an annual basis? And are you prepared to devote that level of time?
So to me, being a member of the city council is very much like having a second full-time job. So, you know, thinking about how much you spend on your regular day job, think about the same amount of time working as a city councillor. It's a lot. Now, fortunately, unfortunately, my husband spends a lot of time out of town. So it means I have a lot of time at night. And so I think I definitely will have the time in order to devote the attention and time that the job of city councillor needs and deserves.
Would you like to repeat it, or are you okay?
Okay. No, it's a commitment, clearly. The number of hours, I think that depends on how committed you are to the job. And I look forward to it. I mean, I will spend my free time, you know, listening to the land use meetings in the background or listening to the public facilities in the background. That's sort of, I joke that it's my hobby a little bit, just to understand it, what's going on. So for me, to be in the meetings, I understand the monthly meetings and the committee meetings. You know, I understand the time commitment. And I decided to step up because sort of where I am in my life, my kids are in college, my elder parent has come to an end, and I have flexibility in the job. So I can be committed to it and respond to constituents when they need something. And I think that's probably the most important reason.
Okay, thank you. Next question, I guess we start with Julie. Is there a difference between the role of a ward councillor and an at-large councillor? And if so, what is it?
I think it's slightly different. I mean, overall, you're part of the city council. You're there for all the decision-making. You're there for the conversation. So at that level, you're the same. But I think you have an added bonus. I see it as a bonus as a ward councillor, that you are probably the first person that the neighborhood will reach out to if there's an issue around a sidewalk, a tree issue. And I actually see that as a privilege, to be able to respond to and help out and get something done for a resident. Something, quality of life, something that happens, you know, that's affecting how they are feeling about living in the city. And to have that direct impact on being able to hear the problem, find out how to address it and solve the problem, to me, that's really satisfying. And, yes, thank you.
Good, thank you. Gary?
So I agree 100% with Julie on this. I think, you know, the ward councillor is a little bit unique in that you're working on citywide issues as a member of the city council. But you're also, your constituents, your main constituency and people who contact you are generally people from just your ward. And you have a kind of, I think, a special responsibility to make sure that you serve the constituents and help them out as best you can when they have issues with the city government. So, yeah, I think we're in complete agreement on this.
Yeah, that last thing you said is especially true when your other two ward colleagues decide to tell them to call you. Not that that's ever happened to me personally.
Never, never, right?
Is Josh still here? No, he left, I think. All right. We'll start with you on this one, Gary. Newton schools face real challenges, but they already account for more than 2/3 of the city's budgets. As a city councillor, how would you work with the school committee, teachers, parents, to strengthen our schools while protecting taxpayers and maintaining other vital city services?
So I think two things here. One is, we need to build a relationship between the city council and the school committee so that we really have a real collaborative relationship that the city council can be, the city councillors can be an ally to the schools. But I think when it comes to the budget, the budget is a priorities document. It tells you who you actually are. You can say, a lot of words you can say about support for the schools, but when it comes to the budget, that's an expression of what your real priorities are. And we just need to start with the schools and then move on to everything else.
Okay. Julie?
Okay. Yeah, I think we're moving in that direction. I'm really encouraged by Superintendent Nohn in terms of working with the city council and with the mayor and really bridging some of those divides. I feel like we're making progress, and I would hope that will continue. I think it's important that there's an open dialogue. And in terms of what to do, maybe even perhaps creating a working group or something that's special to understand the issues, for the city council to understand the issues that are going on in the school. It is so important to get that understanding, to hear from the teachers, the administration, and what's going on, and the school committee. It just needs to be more of an open dialogue, I think. And that's what I'd love to see going forward.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Julie. And this one is, as you've been knocking on doors and meeting voters throughout Ward Five, what are they telling you? Can you tell us their top concerns about this specific village? And what are you hearing? Also, as well, you know, kind of within Waban, the Highlands, Upper Falls, and how would you address those concerns?
Okay.
You know, I just want to preface this for two seconds. The one thing, back when we did the charter, and we were talking about 24 councillors, and I didn't support that aspect of the charter, reducing it. Thing I always thought about, and I'm glad this question is worded this way, is there is such a variety of issues and questions in these neighborhoods as you go throughout the city. You know, it really is, you know, it's 90,000 people, it's 18 square miles, but it is like all over the place in terms of, you know, picking up trash and stuff like that. So sorry for that. But anyway, Julie, that's yours to start.
Yeah. No, like, the favorite part of my campaign is knocking on doors because I say, you never know what the issue is. You know, someone opens the door. And three things I've heard pretty consistently. It's been around the city finances, sort of the landscape, that people are concerned around the budget. Given what's going on nationally, statewide, there are concerns. And people know that the city finances impact everything. So that's one thing. The second thing I hear about the schools. And that's what we just talked about, how to open up the dialogue. They feel like things are a little bit chaotic in terms of the schools. And how do you reduce that feeling and give them confidence back about the schools? So I think it is opening the dialogue. And third, I think I hear just around, well, traffic, basically. It's somewhat down potholes and sidewalks, but it really is around the concerns about pass-through traffic through some of the villages. And that kind of doesn't feel so great.
Gary?
So I think the first thing I would say is, knocking on doors is also my favorite part of the campaign. It's really interesting and gratifying to talk to people and hear how common many of the concerns are and how engaged people actually are at the doors. In terms of the actual issues, I hear schools, number one, over and over again, especially in Waban. Everybody's concerned about the schools for a variety of things. The other big issue I hear, and this is big in Upper Falls, is the roads. And they're really concerned about the state of the roads, especially their back roads. And then the third thing I hear some about is environment and climate change, especially in the Highlands.
Okay. Everybody, okay, good. I'm just looking at the time.
We're following the rules around the timing.
We're doing well. All right, this next question, you'll start off, Gary. The survey responses indicated that Newton residents are concerned about the environment. And despite the current federal situation in Newton, your constituents want to protect the environment and address climate change as it impacts our community. As a councillor, what steps would you take to include all of your constituents in planning and policymaking about public works, public buildings, infrastructure, open space, wooded areas, wildlife habitat, tree cover? Tree cover, that's a big one. And its restoration, bird do, and incentivizing solar power, EV, hybrid vehicles, the whole nine yards.
Is that it?
Yeah. It's a big topic, right? Everybody cares a lot of those.
Yeah. No, I mean, it is a good question. I think, especially with what's going on at the federal level with the environment, it's climate change-related solutions being cut left and right, clean energy solutions being cut. I think it's a really important question. I think the biggest part of the question that I hear is really about communication rather than about climate. And to me, a big theme in my campaign is about communication, relentless communication, and talking to people all the time, everywhere, wherever you can find them. And talking to them about, you know, how can you get clean energy? I think we need to really lean on some of these green groups, like Green Newton, the Friends of Cold Spring Park, and so forth, to really help push this forward.
Julie?
Yeah, I would just follow up about that. There are so many, there are some really great groups around the open green spaces that we have. Friends of Cold Spring, of Hemlock Gorge, of Quinn of a Quinn. We have some with the expertise and passion on these groups. And I'd say we need to empower them to, and maybe help them work together to get the message out. There's a lot of information. And you have to be careful about, you know, shoving too much information for people. Sort of, you know, what are they going to do with it all? But it's really, I think they're the ones we should look to and rely on their expertise and find out what people want to know. That's the other piece. There might be areas or topics that the community is really particularly involved, are interested in Ward Five. And I think we need to find out, really maybe tailor our messaging to the folks in Ward Five and find out what they want to know about and what do they feel like they don't know.
All right, thank you. Yeah, you know, I think actually it's an interesting thing. As one of you get on, other people in this room, I think the council should consider whether or not to actually create a committee specifically dedicated to climate and environment. You know, that would provide more of a genesis to create the kind of dockets and legislative changes that could happen.
That's an interesting proposal. I think there was a proposal to create an environment department, which failed recently. But I think having something in the city council that focused on that.
You have a lot of, you have a lot of power because you've got the legislative capacity there to do it. So I think, all right. This may be our last question. I'm just looking at the time. Can you give us your opinion of City Hall's public engagement efforts? And specifically related to Ward Five? The Highlands Village Center redesign effort, the street work being done on Needham Street, the redesign of the intersection at Elliott and Mechanic in Upper Falls. So I'm sure you got, save the juicy one for the end here. And that is, pardon me for losing track here. Gary, you probably know where I, where was I? I think it's you.
I think it was, yeah. So in terms of the public engagement around the many issues and the many projects that are going on, that is something probably one of the, I find, most frustrating and why I may be running. Because I feel like sometimes, what I've heard at the doors, and it's really resonating with me, I've said it before, that people say they feel like they're not, things aren't being done to them and not with them. So we really have got to figure out a way, if we're going to seek genuine public input, we've got to, you know, act on it and do something with it and know how to implement it with. Nothing feels more frustrating to residents or anyone to speak and then not have your voice or anything action or acknowledged. I think some of it might be just acknowledging that you have concerns and not being perceived as, you know, you're just kind of annoyed by things. So I'd really, just acknowledgement and then acting on whatever input you get would go a long way.
Gary?
So this goes back to communication, which has been a big focus of my campaign. I think, first of all, you know, however much communication you're doing with people, it's undoubtedly not enough. And I think there's a critical role to be played by city councillors in getting out and engaging with voters, even knocking on doors outside of the context of an election and just getting people's input. And I think the other big thing here is the city website desperately needs to be revamped. It's too hard for residents to find the information that they're looking for. And I think that's a big barrier that's causing some people to feel like they can't get any information from people, even though it may actually be there on the city website.
Are we, I'm looking for, are we at time? Can you do one more? Okay. I guess it's that good.
They're gladness for punishment, is what they are.
You've been held over, you know?
No one's blocking out.
So I think we'll talk a little bit, maybe a little more in-depth on this. Residents report confusion and safety issues with transit, traffic, parking, bike and scooter use, a growing thing, lane marking, signage, road pilots, especially in those impacting seniors and people with mobility challenges. As a councillor, how would you think that you could include constituents before the changes are made? And for dessert, we can add any commentary you have we can add any commentary you have on the overnight parking ban, the winter parking ban. So.
So, a couple things here. This is, again, a communications issue primarily, but I, I think, besides the communication issue, I think, first of all, we need to make sure we prioritize separated bike lanes, separated areas for pedestrians and bikes, for safety, because safety comes first. The second thing is, that we have to take with these, a really iterative approach. And I think we need to take, when we make changes like this, we really need to build into that process that maybe the first draft isn't going to be the best one, and be prepared to make changes in response to what happens in the real world. So, and then, as your dessert question, what do I think about the parking ban? I, I support lifting the parking ban. I've seen too many examples of where the parking ban has a disparate impact on different residents who have different levels of, different means, that is, and different configurations of their driveways and so forth. And then, once it's lifted, hopefully, if it's lifted, we can come back to the city council and say, let's create neighborhood solutions for the neighborhood problems that may result from that, so that we can, can fix whatever disparate impacts there are from lifting the ban.
Okay. Julie?
So, going back to the question about the, the transportation and the bike lanes and such. First of all, I do think it is communication, but it's also an education part of it. I, I find that people don't understand sometimes why the bike lanes are there, what to do, or even motorists, what to do with a bike lane. So I think it's both parts. I think it's, there's a piece of, maybe we're missing the education piece. If we're going to move in this direction, everyone needs to be on board with, with what it means. My husband is an avid cyclist who cycles downtown to work, commutes every day back and forth. So we talk a lot about bike lanes, and what works, what doesn't work, and the safety issues around it. And getting back to when, whatever you put in, I do think it has to be iterative, and getting the input of cyclists, maybe new cyclists, people who haven't biked before. I'm not a, you know, I don't cycle that much, and I would probably be nervous on it. But I'd be good to hear my perspective going down Needham Street. You know, what, what do I want to pay attention, what makes me nervous? Or someone who then, who's a, a very, you know, professional cyclist, or someone, to get input from everyone. I think it's important to get the perspectives of people who walk, roll, or, you know, cycle a lot, or even the scooters, some of those issues, and electric bikes. We're all gonna be navigating these, these roadways together. And I think there needs to be a piece of education and respect for everyone who is, you know, moving on the, on the roads and sidewalks.
I didn't really have anything to add on that. I was just shaking my head.
You know, as we, before we go to the summaries, I'd just like to add my own observation here on, it's not just this debate, but I've been watching the other ones, and I, you know, looking at the school committee presentations and so forth. And I have to say, in the, in the years that I've been involved in municipal government, I think the quality of presentations and preparation of the candidates across the board, win, lose, or draw, I think has really come up. I, I think people are better informed. I don't know whether they're doing their homework better, or whether some of these issues have just been around so long that we've all kind of got them internalized. But, but I'm, I'm pleased, again, win, lose, or draw, I think, I, I think we're in a good place as far as the candidates across the board we have this year. So I congratulate everyone who's, who's running for office. And it is an awful lot of work. I think I spent, you know, I was a consultant, so I used to tracking my hours. I think I spent well over 1,100 hours my first year, 80, 90 nights. And having said that, there were more, there were lots of people who worked harder than that. That was just like kind of table stakes to kind of keep up and be competent. So, thank you for that, you know, for your proposal to serve. I think we had you introduce first, Gary, so we'll start with Julie for a summation.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you. First, thanks, the, thanks to the area councils for hosting the debate. I know the, the time and effort it takes to put on these events. So, thank you. Thank you for moderating, Chris, and thanks, Gary, for being here. Look, we're great, we're really, living in Newton is, you know, how do we say? It's a great city to live in. And we have so many amenities, and resources, and opportunities, and really good neighbors. And I think sometimes we forget about that and lose sight of that. Yes, we're a city of nearly 90,000 people, and we're gonna get a lot of different opinions. And that's good. And, and it's okay to push back on some of those ideas. But I don't think, you can't push out the people who are voicing their concerns. So I think that's just one thing. And then looking ahead to the challenges around the budget, schools, housing, they're really complex. And I, I understand the city. I've been working with the city for a number of years. I am ready to do the hard work and the strategic thinking to solve the problems and move the city ahead together. Thank you. And look, you know, I'd be honored to have your vote on November, honored before November 4th.
Gary?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Chris, for moderating. Thank you to all the area council members and the area councils, especially to Chris Pitts, for, I think, being possibly the driving force behind it. And thank you to all everybody in the audience who took the time out to listen. So, Newton, I believe, is an incredible community, and I've been proud to call it my home for the last almost 27 years. I think we all know that there's more to do, keeping our schools strong, making housing more affordable, protecting our environment, and making city government more open and accountable. I think that's a common theme we've heard all across this, this, uh, this, this race. As a software engineer, I think I know how to solve problems, and I know how to make systems work better for everyone. And on the Northland Liaison Committee, I've learned how to bring people together in order to get results. And I'm, I think I'm ready to hit the ground running and help build a Newton networks for everyone. And I'd be honored to earn your vote, honored before November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Gary.
Yes.
Well, you.
Thanks, thanks, thanks. Thank you all for coming.